All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the public hearing for the Marijuana Legislative and Technical Rules Package. My name is Nicole Glossay, and I am the Rules Coordinator for the Oregon Liquor and Cannabis Commission. Today is October 25, 2022, at approximately 10:00 a.m., and this public hearing is being held virtually. As a reminder, please ensure your phone or computers are muted unless you are providing testimony. The purpose of a public hearing is to give interested persons a reasonable opportunity to submit data and/or personal comments prior to the adoption of permanent rulemaking. This morning's hearing is being held in accordance with Chapter 183 of the Oregon Revised Statutes, otherwise known as the Administrative Procedures Act, Division 1 of Chapter 845 of the Commission's Administrative Rules, and Division 1 of Chapter 137 of the Oregon Administrative Rules, otherwise known as the Model Rules of Administrative Procedure. Please be advised that today's hearing is being recorded. During this morning's hearing, I will accept comments from anyone who wishes to submit them. If you are interested in providing testimony but have not yet signed up, please email us now at olcc ruledmaking@oregon.gov. And that email is also in the Teams chat for today's hearing. If you wish to submit written comments after today's hearing, you may do so provided that all submissions are received by 5:00 p.m. on October 31, 2022. You may submit written comments by emailing olcc ruledmaking@oregon.gov. In accordance with OAR 137-001-0040, all public comments received on this matter, whether in the form of written document or oral testimony, will become a part of the permanent rulemaking record. Here is a summary of the proposed rules. The Oregon Legislature passed House Bills 4016 and 4074, which will require amendments to administrative rules set forth in Chapter 845, Division 25. OLCC staff are proposing technical amendments and corrections to administrative rules in Chapter 845, Divisions 25 and 26. At this time, we have one person signed up to give testimony. If you are interested in speaking, please email us at olcc ruledmaking@oregon.gov. I will now take testimony. The first person we have signed up to speak is William Rasmussen of Miller Nash. Before you begin, please state your name and affiliation. As stated in the notice, we will close this meeting five minutes after the last oral comment has been recorded into the record. If we do not receive any additional emails to provide comment, we will close the meeting. To provide comment, please email us at olcc ruledmaking@oregon.gov. William Rasmussen of Miller Nash, you are up first today.
Thank you, Nicole. For the folks I don't know, I'm Will Rasmussen. I am an administrative law partner at Miller Nash. I have, for the last several years, been working closely with the agency and licensees and the CIA and OCA on enforcement reform. That's one of the elements of the rulemaking that's being considered today. I just have two comments I want to make. The first is to appreciate and acknowledge some of the agency staff who have worked closely with licensees on enforcement reform. This has been a great success. And the second is to just highlight one area that I think this rulemaking comes up a little bit short and call for more dialogue and coordination between the agency and interested parties. So on the first point, the agency staff, particularly Rich Evans, a little bit of Amanda Borup, have, for the past year, coordinated with a group of licensees and interested organizations on trying to tailor Oregon's enforcement system for cannabis to make it function more like a normal enforcement system, to make it feel less criminal. And this rulemaking includes a whole bunch of improvements in that regard. It downgrades the number of violations from type 1s to type 3s, 4s, and 5s that are really more accurately treated as a technical violation, a penalty, something that they can pay a fine for, but not something that they should immediately get a notice of cancellation and risk losing their license for. Thank you to the staff who did that and who moved that forward. The verification of compliance program that's been initiated is also likewise very helpful for folks who are trying to run businesses in the state of Oregon. It creates more communication between the agency and really gets people more to compliance than punishment. We would love to see that verification of compliance program actually shown in the rules at some point. We weren't quite able to get there in this rulemaking, but we think that's something that in the future would make sense. The one aspect of this that I don't think quite goes far enough is the new language in OAR 845-025-8760. This is the part where there's a new process created for a letter of recommendation. That effort comes out of a problem, or at least part of that effort comes out of a problem that Oregon licensees are having in other jurisdictions, where they have old, stale violations that may not even be considered violations today, that they have to report to those foreign jurisdictions when they apply for a license in, say, Alameda, California, or Boulder, Colorado. A lot of these local jurisdictions that have local control over licensing in foreign states are using that to avoid awarding licenses to Oregon licensees. That is hamstringing the Oregon industry and some of our most successful cannabis businesses from growing and thriving. Several commissioners, OLCC commissioners, have stated that we need to get this problem fixed so that Oregon can be a hub, it can be a cluster of successful cannabis businesses when national legalization comes along. The primary systemic thing holding Oregon back and Oregon licensees back in other jurisdictions. My understanding is that the DOJ kind of expressed skepticism on how we would do this. I hope the agency will work with me to try to talk with whoever is the person over at DOJ, because what I'm, what I think there is this relatively simple path that might address whatever concerns they have. So I'm going, I'm going to continue circling up with staff and interested folks from the industry on this issue, going to reach out to DOJ on this issue. And I really hope OLCC will be supportive, because there's a lot of things that it's hard for industry and the agency to agree on. And this is one that costs nothing, that I think we're all aligned on wanting to have a healthy Oregon industry that can go and compete in other states. So thank you for the opportunity to speak today, and that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, William. I did receive a few emails. So next up, we have Kristin Stankowitz.
Hi, thanks. Nice to see you all this morning. My name's Kristin Stankowitz. I am an attorney with Greenspoon Martyr. I represent cannabis businesses in licensing and compliance. And generally, I follow the OLCC rule changes closely. And, you know, this session is no different. I've looked through the changes, and I have comments on three things. The one is drive, prohibiting drive-through, continuing to prohibit drive-through windows while allowing walk-through, walk-up windows and onsite delivery. I'm sure you all have thought of this, but there is a major inconsistency in allowing people to drive up, to have their order delivered to them by a staff walking out to them in their cars versus driving up to a window and having a staff pass marijuana items out the window, through a window. It's virtually the same thing. The customer stays in their car. It's, you know, a contactless experience, which is amazing. And I totally applaud the OLCC for creating those onsite delivery rules. And I think, from what I understand, they've been a big success. And I am urging the OLCC to go one step further and allow onsite delivery through a drive-through window. It would be basically the same as long as in compliance with onsite delivery rules, you could just pass the stuff out the window instead of walk out and hand through the window, the car window. And I understand, you know, there might have been an issue with judging intoxication of the people who are being sold these marijuana items. However, you know, it's kind of this, judging intoxication can be done through many different ways, just like a law enforcement does when they do traffic stops. They have an initial encounter. They say, please hand me your driver's license and your paperwork, et cetera. It would be, and then if during that encounter, you see signs of intoxication, you say, please step out. And I think that would be similar to, you know, what the budtenders could do. You're going to be asking for their ID, you're going to be asking for their order information, et cetera. And so you can, you can really judge intoxication based on, based on those, based on different things other than, you know, getting out of your car and walking. So, and you know, the OLCC should really, like, have consistent rules, you know? It's confusing when you read, there's no drive-through, but you can have onsite delivery. And, you know, that's been the issue ever since those onsite delivery rules were passed. It's like a gray area, like, what can you do? I think now the OLCC can say, okay, well, we went through rulemaking and we decided to keep the prohibition, so it's clear. But it still is kind of a gray area. And not, if you're coming into the market, just reading the rules, you're like, what does this mean? We can't do it through a drive-through, but we can have onsite. It's very similar. So I'd urge the OLCC to allow drive-through delivery. The other thing that I would really, I very, very strongly oppose as a practitioner in this space is getting rid of the combo actions, or essentially getting rid of the combo actions, making licensees, sellers of licensed business surrender their license before an investigator is assigned to an ownership change. Basically means that nobody is going to be doing, at a different location, basically means that nobody's going to be doing combo actions, because what seller is going to surrender their business and then hand the process totally over to a buyer and say, okay, buyer, get your license. And if you don't, I, you know, I don't have my license anymore, and my business is gone and all, everything, you know, I've built is gone. So there, it's essentially the rule changes for the combo actions, I think, are going to completely eliminate combo actions. And perhaps that's what you want, but I am here to say that people have very, very much appreciated and enjoyed having, being able to do those combo actions. It's, you know, been essential to have businesses kind of stay nimble. And the other issue for these rules, I thought, that I would like to speak against is doing the conditional approval for business structure changes. I'm not sure if the OLCC is planning on having those conditional approvals be automatic, like the renewal process. And if it is, there is no issue. But if the conditional approval is going to require somebody at the OLCC to review something, I think that really hamstrings the industry in bringing, you know, equity investors on, because the industry has gotten used to the wonderful streamlining that you've done for licensing actions. And being able to get capital, quick capital, has been one of those big benefits. And requiring the conditional approval for a business structure change, I think, is going to, is going to put a pause on, or at least slow down the infusion of capital that's so needed. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kristin. I have gotten a number of requests to speak today. Just as a reminder, we welcome all of your comments. This meeting will be closing at 11:00 a.m., and you are welcome to provide written comments in more detail if you'd like. Next up, we have Jeremy Jenkins. Jeremy, I think you are on mute. Okay, we will come back to Jeremy. Next is Stan Zislas. Zislas?
Yeah, Zislas. Hi, thank you. I'm an owner, I'm one of the owners of Silverstem Fine Cannabis, a dispensary in Portland, and I wanted to speak about the inconsistency between the curbside rules and the drive-up window rules. We believe that being able to operate a drive-through provides options for our customers and having a variety of options for access to cannabis is especially useful for people with special needs or disabilities. Plus, you know, there really, as the previous speaker said, there really is no difference between a curbside delivery and a drive-up window delivery when the order, when there's a bona fide order that's placed online, whether it's paid for or not, it's really just a matter of them picking it up. And the curbside rules state that you can be within 150 feet of licensed premises. Well, this is, you know, oftentimes much closer, because, you know, we're literally, we would literally be passing it through the window. You know, some customers also feel that it may be safer, some staff would also may, may feel that it's safer, safe, a little bit safer, because they wouldn't have to go outside, you know, with the, with the product and, and, and with the, and with the cash. So, you know, not to mention that, you know, it's, it's about convenience, and it's also about efficiency. You know, because the only people that you would really be hurting would be the dispensary staff, because, you know, dispensaries would have to be overstaffed or not be able to provide that service to the customers that need it. So for those reasons, we ask that you reconsider eliminating the, the drive-up window prohibition. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Jeremy Jenkins, have you been able to join us? All right. Next is Jesse Bonnacu.
Hi, my name is Jesse Bonnacu. I'm the Executive Director of the Cannabis Industry Alliance of Oregon, which is the merger of ORCA, the Oregon Retailers of Cannabis Association, the Oregon Industry Progress Association Farms, Inc. I just want to provide a quick comment in support of Will Rasmussen's comment, especially the out-of-state or getting implementation of something to help facilitate clearing up old records and enable Oregon licensees to apply for licenses in other states without unnecessary and, and, and legal baggage that doesn't, isn't really relevant. Huge supporter of all of his comments on that and want to reiterate our special, you know, the thank you to the staff for working with Will and the industry over the last several years on the enforcement reform. We just want to keep going in that direction and make more progress. And then finally, just want to note that we, on behalf of the organization, will be submitting all of our additional comments in written form, because they will be too expensive, too expansive for this limited duration meeting. And a final thing is, we also want to voice support for the drive-through windows. Since people have been internally, since people have found out about the ban, I've gotten more and more feedback that, especially from rural folks, that this is really important to their businesses. I mean, they really appreciate the, to be able to continue how they've been operating over the last couple of years and continue to provide protection to their employees from both COVID and from robberies and thefts. With that, just want to reiterate our deep thank you for the staff for taking their time and attention to all this issue and look forward to, hopefully you look forward to reading our written comments.
Great. Thank you, Jesse. Next, we have Michael Chapel or Chappell?
Oh, yeah, it's Chapel. Cool. Appreciate your guys' time today, and thank you for allowing us to speak. I'm specifically here to talk about the drive-throughs as well. You know, I believe that being able to operate in the drive-through just provides options and options that they've already had through, you know, through the pandemic and with the rules of, you know, curbside. I think that a lot of customers have gotten used to being able to access their product this way. I think that, you know, there's many people that would still like to limit their exposure to people or to, you know, staff and things like that if they're immunocompromised. And, you know, it also supports customers who in, in the transaction. I think that having having multiple different choices to access their cannabis, you know, essentially promotes accessibility for all customers, no matter, you know, what they have going on. And I also believe from an employee standpoint, and if, you know, curbside is still being allowed, a secure drive-through is significantly safer for both the employees and the customers. You know, on an employee standpoint, it removes the exposure of carrying the product, you know, out to the parking lot and/or, you know, having a cash transaction or something along those lines. And, you know, having the transaction happen strictly within the secure area, I believe, is something the OLCC would support. You know, so the main thing, I think, is that it's a positive for both the employees and the customers. And, you know, I'd really ask that you guys reconsider your stance on it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael. Next, we have Jason Lampman.
Hello, thank you. My name is Jason Lampman. I'm a micro-tier producer. It's just my wife and I know employees. I'm here to represent small and micro farms and farmers here in Oregon. I'd also like to endorse William's statements, and thanks for the help, especially for small farms. It can be overwhelming with the legislature and the rules. But my comments today are in regards to 845-025-1115, ORS 475C-177. I believe this subsection was capital D. It was kind of hard to see in there. But the denial of application at the same physical location or address as a premises licensed under ORS 475A.290 or 475A.305. Psilocybin has been an accepted rule as a crop for the purpose of farm use defined in ORS 215.203, a crop for the purposes of a farm and farming practice both as defined in ORS 30.930, the product of a farm use as described in ORS 308A.062, and the product, product of an agricultural activity for purposes of ORS 568.909. Also by definition, in the statute, a psilocybin service center may be carried out in conjunction with a psilocybin-producing fungi crop, which, with the previous ones. And that was, that has been confirmed by a letter to the Department of Justice, counsel from the Department of Land Conservation and Development. Both cannabis and hemp and psilocybin, or all cannabis, hemp, and psilocybin fall under these rules as accepted Oregon farm crops. After speaking with a land use, a couple land use attorneys here in Oregon, my request representing small farms is that the OLCC updates this section to reflect the statutes that I stated. The OLCC nor the OHA have the legal jurisdiction to override the legal and acceptable statewide zoning, farming, and planning rules that protect farmers and farmlands. So I requested you please rewrite this rule so that it may only restrict co-location of cannabis and psilocybin farming on non-exclusive farm-zoned lands. I would also, so that this, what tends to happen, being a small farmer, I don't have time to watch all of these meetings and be there for all this. So I just would also request that I just get a, a, I know this is not a Q and A, but just a, an acknowledgement from the staff that, that you did hear my voice, because what seems to happen is I'll speak or say something, and the rule gets pushed through, and I don't have time to hire two separate lawyers and everything. And then we have to, we end up wearing the cost of that. So I would just like an acknowledgement that, that you guys did hear my comments and that maybe you will not push this through before reviewing the legal side of this. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Yes, thank you, Jason. And we did all hear your comments today, and they will be officially put into the record prior to final ruling.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You as well. Next, London Strickland.
Hello. I would just like to jump on board and make a quick comment to kind of give a second to both, to all of the above. Kristin, Stan, Jesse, and Mike, all on the drive-through window rule potential change. Keeping everything consistent is probably best considering the situations, which was already explained by the previous guests. I would like to highlight that any of these rules that we have gained access to, pulling something away like a drive-through window would obviously restrict and cause more issues for customers that are already used to a certain process in the last, you know, year or two because of these rules. And another one that I wanted to kind of jump on, and probably the only one going to say anything about it, but our dispensary is pretty unique in the situation that since COVID, we have about 80% of our business coming through a curbside onsite delivery system. If the potential rule or the proposed rule, I believe it is 845-025-2885, Section E, a retailer may not deliver marijuana items to a vehicle if a minor is present in the vehicle unless the minor is a registry identification card holder, 18 years of age or older. I would just want to throw our comment out there, the fact that because of 80% of our business comes through that, majority of our onsite delivery customers are, on a daily basis, making comments about how easy it is to come and pick up their stuff due to the fact that they have no way to leave their child in the car. A lot of our, 99% of our customers are very responsible and understand that we have to obviously do everything that we normally do, check IDs, make sure that the credit cards match, et cetera. I just want to make sure that it is out there that it could harm potential businesses that have kind of geared and changed their business practices through these COVID rules. That is all I have to say. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, London. At this time, we do not have anyone else signed up to submit testimony. I will wait a few more moments and check the inbox or the Teams chat to see if anyone else has any interest in submitting testimony. And if I don't hear from anyone within the next few minutes, we will conclude the hearing.
Good morning. I have a brief comment.
Yes, can you please state your name and affiliation, please?
Sure. My name is Bridget McGrath. At this point in time, I'm just a citizen observing the unfolding parallels between psilocybin and cannabis. So my comment is just that I know many folks in the cannabis industry who are concerned about being able to pivot and enable their stream of income to become more diverse and more sustainable in sort of that vertical integration model of business. The limitations around psilocybin right now, separating it from cannabis, are highly problematic. Folks who are in my network are telling me that they've invested all kinds of upfront costs to small business people, small farmers, and that they're essentially being told they can't use any of their existing infrastructure to stack a function, which, you know, in farming and in permaculture makes everything more efficient, to stack a function of adding psilocybin on their existing cannabis farm or cannabis operation. So I just want to comment that that seems highly problematic in the way that very clearly big corporate foreign interest has been coming in and essentially influencing this rulemaking process. So I hope that the OLCC has compassion for the struggles of the small cannabis entrepreneurs in the state and will do what it can to support those farmers in diversifying so that they can be more sustainable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bridget. Again, we'll wait a few more moments and conclude the hearing if we do not hear from anyone else.
Just a quick follow-up question, if I might. Most of my colleagues who, you know, are working and are unable to be here to physically in-person comment, so if folks have comments that they want to send in, would you just let me know where I can find that information or if there's an email?
Yes, it would be the email for this hearing, olcc ruledmaking@oregon.gov. And that is also on the formal notice of rulemaking as well.
I'm sorry, I was just writing it down. Could you just repeat that one more time so I make sure I got it correctly?
Sure. It is OLCC. Sure, it is olcc ruledmaking@oregon.gov.
Thank you.
All right, Jeremy Jenkins, are you here with us?
Yes, hello there, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Oh, great, good. All right, well, thank you again for, for having us and letting us all discuss these in an open forum like this. My name is Jeremy Jenkins. I'm a former assistant manager of a dispensary, and I'd like to just comment on the drive-through proposal. You know, a couple of other people have come up here and made some great points. I'd have to agree with, with a lot of those that they've said already. But just to kind of sum it back up again, you know, I feel like a drive-through is, is pretty safe. Any dispensary members don't have to necessarily leave the, the safety of a building to go drop off any product to people in an unknown car. It's a little more straightforward just to be able to do it through a window and at least have a little security behind you. You know, you could possibly process more people that way too, which is great for the business, obviously. And it, it can be more accessible to a majority of people as well. You know, along with, you know, we just got through COVID and all that, so keeping some distance and just doing, doing things through the window could be a little safer that way as well too. But I just wanted to come up here today and, and make a comment on that.
All right, thank you, Jeremy. At this time, there have been, excuse me, go ahead.
I just said, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. At this time, there have been no further requests to submit comment, so we are going to conclude the hearing. Please remember that written comments-
Hello?
Yes?
Hi, I'm just joining the call. I'd like to make a comment, please. I'm sorry I was late joining the call.
Okay, can you please state your name and affiliation?
Yes, my name is Mert Meeker, I'm with MBM Properties.
Okay, great.
Should I go ahead?
Go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I represent a landlord in the Portland metropolitan area that has been in the community with this particular property they have for about 45 years. They do have a current cannabis tenant and they have an active drive-through lane associated with that property. The drive-through for them provides a designated area for pickup that is safe for the consumer and their employees of the cannabis dealer and the surrounding community. It's a known location on the property for people to have that, that service available and you don't have random locations throughout the parking lot. It gives an opportunity to serve those that have mobility issues, addresses some ADA requirements, and, and those that are purchasing medical marijuana, so it's a convenience to all those. It's also very well-lit and secure, so again, good for the property, good for the operator, and good for the community. We see it as no different than other properties we have, which include major grocery stores like Fred Meyer. We have a Fred Meyer in the Vancouver area that has, excuse me, a designated pharmacy drive-through lane, and that allows for, again, for customer convenience, safety, and service to those with mobility issues. So we're, we're a strong advocate for allowing the use of drive-throughs for safe and secure product delivery. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on the call that would like to submit testimony today? Okay, at this time, we are going to conclude the hearing. Please remember that written comments must be received by October 31st, no later than 5:00 PM to be considered during rulemaking. Thank you for your interest and participation, and have a great rest of your day.